I manage the grocery store. Uh, A C or P R I if you're so sometimes I look at it like the first time we go. I'm in CPS two because I'm assessing, I'm looking how are they doing? Um, the second time we go, I'm practicing right along with them. I'm skill building, making sure they have the skills to select what they need. Let's see, it might not be one, two. Grocery store three or four times. I'm still teaching skills, still training the book there. Once they got the skills, I might go A C because I'm still prompting, monitoring, making sure like, yeah, that's right, go ahead, you know, that sort of thing, but we're not really skill building. So that was a, uh, so CPS team, this gives you some ideas. Have this, I wrote some N words in my mind. Supportive, seen, too. See the difference?
I am Chairperson Brian Fry with some Ozzy Osbourne reverb going. Start too soon, sorry. Hopefully, hopefully everyone enjoyed the beautiful double rainbow this morning. Thank you, all over Facebook, I know I'm seeing some amazing pictures. So welcome all being here. We will get started with opening announcements. If you would please, Scott.
Monitoring to make sure they're not, they're on track, they're not causing trouble. So P R, individual or in group, I tend to look at this as around.
Before we begin the agenda, the Wichita Cedric County Metropolitan Area Planning Commission and the Wichita Cedric County Board of Zoning Appeals would like to take this opportunity to welcome everyone to this public hearing. For those in attendance, copies of the agenda for today's meeting, the public hearing procedure and planning department staff reports on all agenda items are available in the lobby. The planning commissions and the B Z A's bylaws limit the applicant on a zoning subdivision or variance application and his or her representatives to a total of 10 minutes of speaking time at the start of the hearing on that item, plus up to two minutes at the conclusion of that hearing. All other persons wishing to speak on agenda items are limited to three minutes per person. However, if they feel that it is needed and justified, the chairman may extend these times by up to two minutes. All speakers are requested to state his or her name and address for the record when beginning to speak. When you are finished speaking, please share your name, address, and the case number on the sheet provided in the room. This will enable staff to notify you if there are any additional proceedings concerning that item. All speakers at the podium, please remove your face mask before speaking into the microphone. Please note that all written and visual materials you present to the commission and the board will be retained by the secretary as part of the official record. If you are not speaking, but you wish to be notified about future proceedings on a particular case, please provide your contact information to the planning department. The planning commission and the board are interested in hearing the views of all persons who wish to express themselves on all the agenda items. However, we ask that all speakers, please be as courteous and concise as possible and avoid long repetitions of facts or opinions which have already been stated. For your information, the Wichita City Council has adopted a policy for all city zoning items. A copy of this policy is available from the planning staff. The city council relies on a written record of the planning commission hearings and does not conduct its own additional public hearings on these items. The decision of the B Z A is final. Any appeal of a decision of the B Z A is to the district court.
All right, our next item is 1.2, roll call, Mr. Wade, please.
Yes, sir. Fry.
Present.
Mater.
Here.
McKay.
Here.
Duel.
Here.
Bill Johnson is absent. Hi.
He stepped out of the room, he'll.
I think I've got him as here. Nix.
Here.
Clontz.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Joe Johnson.
Here.
Miles.
Present.
Zimbleman.
Here.
Aldrich.
Here.
Williams Bay.
Here.
Sir, I show 13 members are present and one is absent.
All right, thank you. Next item is 1.3, which will be the approval of the M A P C meeting minutes from July 10th. I show that Commissioners Bill Johnson, Jocelyn Clontz, and Mr. Williams Bay were absent, and Commissioner Miles left early on the last item. Move for approval. We have a move to approve by Commissioner Joe Johnson with a second by Commissioner McKay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay, all abstain. We have at least the two abstains, so that would be, um, 11-0 approval with two abstains. All right, uh, next we will go through the agenda to see which items we can approve on consent. There is no B Z A items, so we will just go through the, uh, regular agenda. Subdivision Committee, item 2.1, which is sub 2025-36, a final plat for the Falcon Crest addition. Are there any Commissioners who would like to hear that case? Seeing none, are there any members from the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item 2.1 to consent. Item 2.2 is subdivision 2025-37, a one-step final plat for the Vineyard Terraces III, roughly north 215th Street West and a half mile south north of West 29th Street North. Are there any Commissioners who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members in the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item 2.2 to consent.
Chairman, I move that we approve items 2.1.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Williams Bay with a second by Commissioner Warren for items 2.1 and 2.2 to consent. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Now, the vacation items, uh, vacation 2025-22, this was deferred from July 10th. That's a city utility easement at South Bear Street and West MacArthur Road. Are there any members from the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members from the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item 3.1 to consent. Item 3.2, vacation 2025-23, this was deferred from July 10th as well. For vacation, uh, requesting the city of a 15-foot platted side setback roughly South Hillside and East Penley Drive. Before we ask for Commissioners wanting to hear it, I do believe we have a staff update.
Yeah, my understanding is that, um, the discussion going on where it's pending still is, um, the applicant needing to provide either an easement or an encroachment agreement or something like that with Public Works and Utilities. That is a condition of approval that was in the staff report from the very beginning, um, and that is something that has to be completed before it would go on for final action at city council. Um, and so that's not anything new added to the case. So that's just where my understanding of where the case is at this point.
Okay. So are there any members from the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members from the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item 3.2 to consent. We have a motion by Commissioner Warren with a second by Commissioner Nix for consent. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Now, the, uh, public hearings for conditional use, P U Ds and zoning. Uh, first one is 4.1, conditional 2025-85 to allow an accessory apartment on property north side of West MacArthur Road and approximately south 135th Street South. Are there any members from the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members from the public who would like to hear this case? Okay, item 4.1, do we know if the applicant or agent for that case is here? You're here, okay, great. So we will hear item 4.1. 4.2 is conditional 2025-86, uh, for request in the county for an accessory apartment, uh, roughly South Ash Circle and South Hydraulic Avenue. Are there any members from the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members from the public who would like to hear this case? We have a raised hand. Do we have the applicant or agent for this case present? Okay, great, we will move item 4.2 to consent, or to, uh, public hearing. Uh, item 4.3, conditional 2025-88, uh, in the city for an accessory apartment, south side of North Richmond Avenue and West 21st Street North. Are there any members from the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members from the public who would like to hear this case? We have a same raised hand? Do we have the applicant agent present for this case? We, okay, good. Okay, uh, 4.3 will be moved to public hearing. 4.4, conditional use 2025-89 for an accessory apartment in the city on the northwest corner of West 32nd Street South and South Everett Street. Are there any members from the public who would, or from the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members from the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we will, uh, hear 4.4 on consent. 4.5 has been withdrawn, so we will not be hearing that case. 4.6 is a P U D 2025-11, a zone change request from, uh, single-family residential to a P U D for an electrical substation, West Second Street North and North Tyler Road. Are there any members on the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members from the public who would like to hear this case? We do have a yes, okay. Do we know if we have the applicant or agent present? We do, good, okay. We will hear item 4.6. Uh, 4.7 is a zone 2025-25 deferred from July 10th. This is a zone change request, uh, from MF 29 to L C, South Hillside Avenue and East Pawnee Avenue because staff is recommending denial. We will hear this case. 4.8 is zone 2025-31 from S F 20 and Rural Residential to Limited Industrial District, North Greenwich Road and East 37th Street North. Are there any members from the commission who would like to hear this case? From the commission? Seeing none, are there any members from the public who would like to hear this case? Okay, we have a raised hand. Do we have the applicant or agent present? Good, so we will hear item 4.8. Uh, 4.9 is zone 2025-32, uh, zone change request from Rural Residential and S F 20 to L I, roughly the same neighborhood of East 37th Street North and North Greenwich Road. It's actually adjacent to the previous case. Any members from the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, are there any members from the public who would like to hear this case? Okay, we have a raised hand and it's, I assume it's the same applicant agent? Yes. So we will hear 4.9. 4.10 is, uh, was deferred to August 14th, so we will not be hearing 4.10. Uh, item 5.1, well, let's address items, uh, for consent first before we get to 5.1.
Second.
Was that the only one? All right, so we have a motion to approve from, it was that Commissioner Warren, and we have a second from Commissioner Miles. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item 5.1 is a non-public hearing. It was referred back from the Board of County Commissioners, zone 2025-17. Um, zone change request in the county from I P A Industrial Park to G C, South Rock Road, and East 47th Street South. There is no recommended action from the staff listed on my agenda, but because it's referred back from the B O C C, we will be hearing this case, even though we did it right the first time. Editorial comment removed. All right, so let's go to our first hearing, which is case 4.1. And welcome, Mr. Dietz, is this your first case presenting? J M A P C, well, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Samuel Dietz, presenting planner. Case 2025-00085 is a request for an accessory apartment located at 13040 West MacArthur Road, uh, which is generally located on the north side of West MacArthur and a quarter mile east of South 135th Street West. The property is zoned S F 20, single-family residential, and is approximately 15.1 acres. The site currently has a single-family dwelling. The proposed accessory apartment would be located 344 feet from the front property line and 150 feet from the east property line. It is proposed to be 40 feet by 60 feet. The area in which this is located is low-density residential. To the north is an agricultural use. To the south, east, and west are single-family dwellings. The site was planted on October 16th, 1991 as part of the trinkle addition. And it is served by West MacArthur Road, which is a county arterial, and it has onsite sewage and is within Cedric County Rural Water District Number Four. The accessory apartment, um, as defined by the Unified Zoning Code, uh, would be, uh, is an accessory dwelling unit that may be wholly within or may be detached from a principal single-family dwelling unit. A maximum of one accessory apartment may be allowed on the same lot as a single-family dwelling and may be within the same building with an accessory building or constructed as an accessory apartment. The appearance of the accessory apartment must be compatible with the main dwelling unit and the character of the neighborhood. The accessory apartment must remain accessories due and under the same ownership as the principal single-family dwelling unit. Water and sewer service provided to the accessory apartment shall not be provided as a separate service. Uh, this property is located within the Wichita Growth Area and is categorized as a residential area. And the, within that, uh, the community unit plan, uh, requested zone change is in conformance with it, um, as this area is described as an area that encompasses, uh, full diversity of residential development densities and types typically found in a large urban municipality. That range of housing densities and types includes, but is not limited to, single-family detached homes, semi-detached homes, zero-lot line units, patio homes, duplexes, townhomes, apartments, and multifamily units, um, as well as a few more. Uh, with that, staff recommends approval subject to conditions, and I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sam. I noticed that this particular property is not within the Wichita city limits and being in the county, do you know if Commissioner Blue Ball has an advisory board for, and does he hear these kind of cases?
Yes, uh, this will go before an advisory board.
Actually, um, Commissioner Blue Ball does not, he has not, when he took office, he did not recreate, um, Council District Two Advisory Board. It used to have one, um, but after the election, it has not been reestablished.
Okay.
So that planning commission would be the only recommendation moving forward.
This will be the only public hearing?
Correct.
Also let the record reflect that Commissioner Bill Johnson has arrived and we have a full body. Uh, any other questions for Sam? Okay, seeing none, we'll ask the applicant agent to come forward and you'll have up to 10 minutes to add anything that you'd like to, to the hearing? Yeah, Philip?
Oh, I was just gonna say, it appears that this is actually in Council District Three, which is Stephanie Wise District.
Oh, it is, okay.
Have a.
County Commission District.
Yeah, County Commission District Three, she does have an advisory board, which means on July 29th and will be heard on July 29th.
So it will be heard at a county?
Yes.
And that's Commissioner Wise?
Yes, Ca- Commissioner District Three, yes, I apologize for, I just went off of what you said and checked myself before, so my fault.
I was just looking at the map thinking I, I knew the lines better.
No, so County District Three will meet, um, next week at 7:00 P. M., and if anybody has any, wants any more information, they can talk to us after the meeting.
Thank you. Yes, sir, give us your name and address for the record, you'll have up to 10 minutes. And if you're the applicant or the owner, which are you?
I am the son of the applicant and.
Okay, so again, your name and address for the record.
My name is Aiden Lang, my address is 13040 West MacArthur Road.
Can you move the mic up a little bit closer to, or speak a little bit better into it?
My name is Aiden Lang, and I live at 13040 West MacArthur Road. The only thing I'd like to add to what Mr. Dietz had to say is that it is going to be 40 by 18, so it's not a very big dwelling, um, and it is also just going to be me living in it. I already live on the property, I would just be moving out into the small dwelling. It's gonna be something like an in-law suite, and there wouldn't be anyone else renting it out or living in there. Thank you.
Sir, before you leave, any questions from the commission for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you, sir, stand by. And we'll have public comment now. If there's anyone from the public who would like to, uh, make remarks on this case, now is the opportunity. Yeah, please go to the, uh, mic, to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes.
My name is Barbara Elkins. I currently live for the last 52 years at 3916 Wesley. I also own 3900 Wesley and 3940 Wesley. From what I was just told, you're not adding any additional sewer, electrical, anything, you're gonna run it off of a septic or lagoon?
Ma'am, keep the questions to the commission.
I just making sure that's why I understood him saying.
Right, and that the staff can answer that question.
Okay, so that's all our concerns, we're living in the area, whether or not they're gonna bring, we live there 52 years, we can't get gas, sewer, anything to us. Usually for multi-purpose dwellings, I would think they have to bring in their own sewer, their own water. You just can't connect it onto another lot, so that was not why our concerns that we're here.
Anything else, ma'am?
Huh?
Anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Uh, staff, you want to address that, or you want to wait for the applicant?
Yeah, as, um, required by the Unified Zoning Code, they have to easily hook into the onsite, um, so onsite water and onsite sewer will be needed for the additional dwelling.
Any other public comments or questions? Seeing none, uh, anything you want to add, sir? Or are you good? Sorry, I need you to, yeah. You have up to two minutes for rebuttal opportunity if there's anything you wanted to add or clarify.
Uh, I'll just tell you, we will be using our lagoon that we already have, and we will just be using water from the well, so we're not bringing anything else on or adding. It would just be the shed that we're adding to the property.
Thank you. So, uh, with rebuttal opportunity finished, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and action.
Motion to approve for staff recommendations and comments.
We have a motion to approve, uh, by Commissioner Aldrich with staff recommended comments and seconded by Commissioner Williams Bay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. And with one abstention from Commissioner Bill Johnson. All right, next item is 4.2. Conditional use 2025-86.
Good afternoon, Samuel Dietz, presenting planner. Conditional use 2025-00086 is a request for an accessory apartment located on the east side of South Ash Circle and within one-third mile east of South Hydraulic Avenue. The site is zoned S F 20, single-family residential, and, uh, is 1.13 acres. The subject site, uh, is separate from but adjacent to an existing main dwelling unit at 8420 South Ash Circle. These properties, at the time the application was submitted, had the same ownership and zoning, and therefore were considered one zoning lot. Um, as a result, the accessory apartment would have been accessory to the existing dwelling unit, um, as you can see on the photo. However, the applicants intend to construct a single-family home on the, that adjacent lot in addition to the accessory apartment, and therefore are in the process of, uh, transferring ownership of that lot into their business. And that will separate, remove the restrictions, um, that are in place as a result of the one zoning lot. The site currently has a pole barn. As mentioned, there will be a single-family home in addition to the accessory apartment, and these will be constructed at the same time. The accessory apartment will be 160 feet from the front property line and 35 feet from the north property line. The area in which this is located is low-density residential in unincorporated Cedric County and zoned S F 20, single-family residential. Within the, um, Community Investments Plan, the site is identified as a rural area, um, which encompasses land outside the 2035 urban growth areas for Wichita and the small cities, and where agricultural uses, rural-based businesses, and larger lot residential exurban subdivisions likely will be developed in this area. This, uh, accessory apartment, as well as the, uh, single-family home, are intended for family members. At the time, uh, of this meeting, staff has received one email and one phone call in opposition to their request. If we could go to the site photos. This is a view looking east into the property with the existing pole barn. The main dwelling unit as it currently exists is to the right. Next photo, please. As you can see here, there's the main dwelling unit, the pole barn, and the lot where the new single-family home and accessory apartment will go. Next slide. Here's a view looking to the north with the corner of the pole barn and the, uh, neighboring single-family home. Next slide, please. And this is a view looking south away from the site. Um, as you can see, the site is located on South Ash Circle, which is a gravel road. Uh, the site does have, um, onsite water and sewage. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, does anyone from the commission have questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you. We'll ask the applicant or agent to come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to 10 minutes.
My name is Jesse Hidalgo, and I live at, live at 8420 South Ash Circle, as indicated on the map, where the property is just south of where we are looking to develop. So we're looking to build a house, uh, on the property and a mother-in-law suite for my future mother-in-law living there, uh, if the need arises.
Does anyone from the commission have questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you, sir, stand by. Are there any questions from the public or any comments? Yes, please go to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes.
My name is George Wetzler, I live at 8450 South Minnesota Circle or Court, depending on which map you're looking at, and the. And the question I have is that that lot has been empty for a while, and I knew it was owned by the people that had lived next door. Now, the question I have is with building the house there, which is approved based on the way it's established, but will it also pass the ground perp test? Because we are all on well water and septic tank lateral systems out there, and I don't know how that ground will handle the additional sewage of two locations on one lot. And I believe your lot's probably, what, 1.7 acres?
Okay, anything else, sir?
No.
We'll see if staff can answer that question for you.
Sure. So in the process of requesting a building permit, they will have to have, they will have to have the test to make sure that their septic and sewage can be taken care of. So it will be the folks down in MABCD who will ensure that that's done before a building permit can get issued.
Any other public comment or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Agata, did you want to add anything or clear anything up? Are you good? Okay, thank you. Let the record reflect that he passed. Bring it back to the commission for action.
For approval.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Joe Johnson with a second by Commissioner Miles. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item 4.3 is conditional use 2025-88.
Yes, sir, thank you. Brad Etherly, MAPD. We are discussing Case Con 2025-00088, which is a conditional use request for an accessory apartment. The property is zoned SF5, single-family residential. It sits on a .6 acre, .6 acre property and is located on the south side of North Richmond Avenue and 915, 15 feet north of West 21st Street North. It is currently developed with a single-family residential dwelling and one detached shed. The applicant has indicated that they intend to construct three accessory structures on the site. One is a 50 by 25 dwelling unit, which is the accessory apartment, a 12 by 12 detached garage, and then a 20 by 20 shop at the very south end of the lot. The applicant also intends to install a new driveway that will connect the new garage to Richmond Avenue. And all of these structures will be well outside the setback lines that are in the EZC code. The code requires one parking space per accessory apartment and one space for a single-family residence, and the driveways that exist and are proposed will meet those requirements. The character of the neighborhood is low-density residential. If we can go to the zoning map, the property is surrounded by properties in the SF5 district, and all are developed with single-family dwellings. The property was platted on November 9th, 1953, as part of the Benjamin Hill Second Edition, and no other zoning cases are associated with the site. It has access to North Richmond Avenue. All municipal services serve the site, and Wichita Transit does not serve the subject site, with the nearest stop being over a half a mile to the east at the corner of West 24th Street North and North Amaden. If we can go to the future growth map, the proposed use is in conformance with the future growth map, which identifies the site as appropriate for residential, which the plan defines as areas that reflect the full diversity of residential development densities and types typically found in a large urban municipality. As far as locational guidelines, or I'm sorry, Wichita Places for People, it's also in conformance. Strategy Five aims to provide a diversity of housing options to attract new residents and allow existing residents to remain in the ECA. An accessory apartment introduces a new type of housing not found within the immediate vicinity, which diversifies the types of housing. If we can go to the site pics. Here we have looking south into the site. Next picture. Looking east away, next picture. This is looking north away, next picture. This is looking west away from the site. I believe that's all the pictures we have. So staff does recommend the conditional use be approved based off of the, or subject to the conditions listed in the report. This is based off the golden factors, and to this point, no comments have been heard. With that, I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Brad. Any members from the commission? Commissioner Warren?
Brad, the only thing that we're considering today is the accessory apartment. We're not looking at the additional buildings that they've talked about doing in the future, correct?
That's correct.
Any other? Commissioner McKay?
Yes, would you explain, not necessarily to me, but to the applicant, about the use of this auxiliary apartment?
I'm afraid I'd...
Can be used for, and who can use it?
Sure. The accessory apartment is used as a secondary dwelling unit. It can be used by family members, or it can be rented out to other individuals. Does that suffice? Thank you.
Seeing no more questions from commissioners, well, thank you, Brad. We'll ask the applicant, agent, or owners to come forward. Just give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to 10 minutes to add anything that you'd like to the report.
Sure. My name is Catherine Foltz-Katy. I live at 2377 North Richmond. I lived there for about 15 years so far. We are building this dwelling for my in-laws to be moving in with us. My father-in-law recently got in a wreck and is not able to really walk in his house anymore, so we are trying to build him a zero, ADA-approved house in their backyard. And so with that, we wanted a driveway that he could walk right into. With the driveway being on the other side of our house, we had to build him a driveway on that side. And so this is why we're trying to build the driveway on the other side and the straight home for my in-laws.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners? Seeing none, stand by. We may have more follow-ups. Any members from the public who would like to comment or have questions on this case? Please give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Linda Zier. I live at 2604 West Benjamin Drive. My backyard kind of backs up to that backyard. Most of my questions, I think, have already been answered. I was concerned if the new dwelling could be a short-term rental, such as like an Airbnb or something like that. I didn't know what the regulations were. But a good question about the other buildings, do they have to come back, or do you have to come back every time you want to build a building?
I'm gonna let staff answer both of your questions.
Okay.
If that's, do you have anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, we'll let staff answer both of the questions. Thank you.
So for the short-term rental question, there's a different, but similar zoning process that would need to be undertaken by the property owner in order to get permission to do that. And just be aware, we've got information about how to go through that process, what it looks like on our website, and we're more than happy to answer any detailed questions in the office. The second one was about the other accessory structures. No, those are permitted by right, just as they've been described so far. Our zoning goes into effect depending on the use, but also on the location. But as shown, I believe, on the diagram, they were outside the setback, so there's no further additional zoning changes or efforts that would be needed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Aldrich?
Ma'am, I have a quick question for you.
Yes.
I know you have a neighborhood association, or a neighborhood association, but do you have a active homeowners association in the Benjamin Hills area?
Yes. We have Benjamin Hills Pleasant Valley Homeowners or Neighborhood Association.
Okay, but there's a difference between a neighborhood association and an...
Okay, good question. I don't know.
Okay.
I don't think there's, no. No HOA. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
No.
All right, thank you.
All right, Ms. Folds, if you wanted to add anything in response to the questions that were asked, this is your opportunity, or you can pass. Ms. Folds, you gonna pass on your rebuttal? Are you good?
I'm good, sorry.
All right, thank you. So we'll close the public hearing. I'm sorry, there were no other questions, correct? Okay, good. Close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for consideration and action. We have a motion by Commissioner Nix and a second by Commissioner Zimbalman. That's who I heard. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, item 4.6 was supposed to be next, but we had a person who raised their hand and asked to be heard, but they have now met with the applicant, and I understand their questions have been answered. So unless there are any other comments or questions, I move that we motion to approve on consent.
Maybe we need to get on record that the applicant is in agreement with staff comments.
Thank you. Well, first off, make sure there's no other comments or questions. Seeing that, we'll ask the applicant if you're in agreement with the staff recommended comments.
Good afternoon. Rebecca Melius, PEC, agent for the applicant, for the record. We are in agreement with staff comment, and I might just note that the gentleman that was here is a neighbor to the back. He was unable to make the public meeting that we had two weeks ago, and so just had some questions about what the final product would look like, and he is comfortable with what's proposed.
Okay, with that being said, any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for...
Second.
Action and consideration.
Move to approve.
Motion, I had the motion to approve. Second by Commissioner Aldrich. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Item 4.7, is that correct? Is that the right order? Is our applicant agent for 4.7 present?
Come on, raise your hand.
You are here? Okay, great. Okay, so item 4.7 is Zone 2025-25.
Thank you, Chairman Fry. Christina Reith with Planning Staff, here to present Zone 2525. The applicant for this case is requesting a zone change from MF29, multifamily residential, to LC, limited commercial. This is .17 acres in size, and it's generally located on the east side of South Hillside, as you see on the aerial map here, within 700 feet north of East Ross Parkway. The property is currently undeveloped, and the applicant is requesting the zone change in order to allow vehicle repair. The applicant also owns the property to the south, which is zoned LC, and plans to use this site, this site, as well as the one to the south for vehicle repair. And vehicle repair is allowed by right in limited commercial zoning. The principal building would be located on the portion of the site that is already zoned LC, and then the north would be for the eight parking spaces associated with vehicle repair. MF29 zoning allows for residential uses up to 29 dwelling units per acre. LC zoning allows up to 75.1 dwelling units per acre, as well as a limited number of commercial uses. You'll see in the table below, I've provided the development standards for setback lot area and width requirements. Compatibility height and setback standards do not apply to the subject site because it is more than 50 feet from TF3, two-family residential district, or more restrictive zoning. For the vehicle repair, the proposed use, it requires one parking space per 333 square feet of office space plus three additional parking spaces. The applicant did not specify how big the office building would be, but if approved, they would be required to provide the appropriate number of parking spaces. I mean, in regards to signage, since the property is located on an arterial street, one of its MF29 zoning signage is limited to grounded pole signs with a maximum area of 48 square feet, and they cannot be more than 20 feet in height, and are limited to indirect or internal white illumination. Should the zone change request be approved to LC, signs are allowed up to 400 square feet in area or 20% of the tenant space elevation, whichever is smaller. Since it is still adjacent to MF29 zoning, there must be an open space of at least 150 feet deep from the sign surface to the property line. Since the applicant requests to have a commercial business on a major arterial street, the applicant will be required to install one shade tree or two ornamental trees for every 500 square feet of required landscape street yard, in addition to parking lot screening. The character of the neighborhood, I would say, really contributed to our determination, our recommendation towards or for the MIPC this afternoon. The character of the neighborhood is mostly residential north of the Gypsum Creek and commercial south of the creek. To the north and the east, we see MF29 developed as open space, or it is in use as open space, sorry. To the south and the west is zoned LC and is not developed. To the west, across Hillside Avenue, is zoned, planned, needed development, and it was designed to have event centers in the city, but it is currently not developed. There are no zoning cases associated with this property. The requested zone change is not in conformance with the Community Investments Plan. The 2035 Future Growth Concept Map identifies a site as appropriate for parks and open space, which includes major parks, golf courses, public open space, private development reserves, and recreational facilities and corridors. So that does not align with the recommended types and uses per the category. Of the locational guidelines within the Community Investments Plan, they provide a decision-making framework regarding land use changes. One of the land use compatibility guidelines, it discourages development from occurring in aquifer recharge, flood-prone, high groundwater, wetland, and unsuitable soil areas. And as you can see in the aerial map, as well as the zoning map, the subject site is right adjacent to the Gypsum Creek. It is also not in conformance with the Wichita Places for People Plan. Strategy Six, it encourages infill and redevelopment that is contextual to the environment in which it is occurring. Gypsum Creek is an open space, and therefore vehicle repair, staff feels, is not contextual to the surrounding environment. Planning Staff is recommending denial of the zone change request based on the golden rules that are listed in your staff report. This went to the District Advisory Board earlier this month, and they recommended denial for this case as well. And so with that, I will go to the site photos. This is looking east towards the site. Next slide, please. This is looking north away from the site, Uphillside Avenue. Next slide, please. This is looking south away from the site. The bridge is where you see Gypsum Creek. Next slide, please. And this is looking west away from the site. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Christina, could you explain what the posts are looking east into the site? Was it fenced off at one time?
I can't speak to those posts, actually.
No history, no knowledge?
Maybe the applicant might know.
Thank you. Commissioner Aldrich?
Christina, the property to the south that is currently LC zone, does that, is that in conformance with the comprehensive plan and policies?
Could we go to the Future Growth Concept Map slide, please? It looks like that is also reserved for parks and open space, the property directly south of the subject site.
Okay, because I, they already, it's, but it is LC.
It is zoned LC, correct.
It looks like to me, since it's the same ownership, and what they're looking at doing is basically squared out their property. And if it's already LC on its south, to me, it makes no sense why the northern section of that can't be also LC too. And they would be allowed to do what they want to do to the property based on the LC zone, correct?
If the zone change request is approved, that's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Zimbalman?
Hey, Christina, did the subdivision committee look at the case? I tend to remember looking at this.
I believe the subject site has already been plotted, so I don't, I don't know if the subdivision committee is looking at this again.
Well, if they did, I'd like to know what our vote was on it.
There, with it being only a zoning case, unless there's other things related to plating or vacation or something, subdivision wouldn't look at this. So I don't recall it going to subdivision in the recent history.
This was deferred, right? So I probably am remembering from the first time.
Oh, the reason it was deferred last time is because the applicant agent was not here, so we didn't hear the case. Commissioner Mater? Commissioner Mater?
As always, I seem to be confused. So it's all under private ownership, but that portion that we're considering today is in the long-range plan to be used for parks.
That's correct.
But it's under private ownership?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any reason why the city isn't buying this? I'm gonna have a problem today with this, okay.
I'm sure the applicant can speak as to when they purchase the property.
We'll listen with them, okay.
Commissioner Nix?
Christina, can you flip back to the couple photos previously, one that abuts up to the bridge?
Yeah, could we go to looking south away from the site, please? Thank you.
So where, I'm a little confused, where's the property line?
Let's see, because I believe this section here is actually the LC portion where the pole is. And then this is the Gypsum Creek where my mouse is. So I imagine if it would be, the property line would, or for the subject site would start just north of where this, or just below where this picture ends.
So it's already buffered by LC and the creek?
It is directly south of LC, that's correct.
LC is directly south of the property in question?
Yes.
Correct. Any other questions from the commission? Christina, thank you Christina.
Thank you.
We'll ask the applicant and owner agent to come forward. You'll have up to 10 minutes, and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, my name is Rahat Masri. I live at 2256 South Senegal Street, Wichita, Kansas, 67213. As you guys, I do apologize, this is my first time. So the property in front is ours. On the back, we're just planning to have extra space for parking. So when we do open up a small mechanic shop, we just want to have extra parking on the back, or like have a dumpster for trash or something. Not planning to build any kind of building structure on the back.
Do you have any history on the property? Do you know why those posts were there?
I don't, I don't know. We got it last year, and that's just how we got it.
And who did you purchase it from? It wasn't from the city?
No, it was from a gentleman, and our real estate agent helped us buy that property.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you. Standby. Are there any members from the public who would like to comment on this case? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for consideration and action. Commissioner Aldrich?
I'd like to make a recommendation that we approve and find that it does meet the characters of the neighborhood, and it's not a restriction or detrimental to nearby properties. What else have I missed?
You just need to say what we're approving the zone change.
Yeah, approving the zone change to LC.
Okay.
So I'll second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Aldrich to approve with alternate findings that it is suitable for the neighborhood, and second by Commissioner Mater. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is 4.8. Zone 2025-31.
Yes, thank you once again, Brad Etherly with MAPD. We are discussing Zone 2025-00031, which is a request for a zone change from SF20 and RR to LI Limited Industrial to allow for future development on the properties. This is a 158-plus acre subject site with multiple properties that's generally located on the west side of North Greenwich and within one half mile south of East 37th Street North. The site is currently in agricultural use with what looks like a single-family dwelling and some accessory outbuildings as well. And then the southern property also appears to have been developed with a service road that allows construction to the Jabara Airport property to the west. As far as surrounding areas, the property to the north is currently zoned RR and SF20, and the owner is also requesting a zone change at this current meeting. And then property further to the north was just approved yesterday at the Cedric County Board of Commissioners meeting to allow, to change the zoning from RR to GC, general commercial, and created the Crestwood Landing Edition CUP DP363, which this body heard earlier in the year. Should the zone change be approved, development standards will change, as seen in the table and the report. We'll mention that the subject site is within Area A of the airport hazard zone in relation to the Colonel James Jabara Airport, which restricts height to 25 feet for all structures, unless it has an air hazard permit, which could possibly permit structures to exceed that 25 feet in height. The proposed zoning allows for maximum building heights of 80 feet, but the Wichita Municipal Code does require the applicant to obtain a determination of no hazard from the Federal Aviation Administration in order to do so. And those airport hazard zone regulations would supersede any compatibility height standards or maximum heights defined in the UCC. Speaking of compatibility height standards, the subject site does abut the RR zoning district on the northeast corner and SF5 single-family to the south. Of course, I've already stated that rezoning applications are being considered later in this meeting for the properties to the north. So there might be some flex in what's zoned residential or not. But again, the airport hazard zone regulations supersede any of these compatibility heights or maximum heights defined in the zoning code. The zoning code requires solid screening of commercial and/or industrial uses when they're abutting or across the street or alley from residential zoning districts. And the property does abut residential zoning to the south, so a six-foot solid screening fence would be required at the minimum. There's also the northeast corner of the northern parcel where the subject site abuts a 4.66 acre property zoned RR that is not in all of these requests. And then, of course, the property to the north is currently zoned SF20 and RR. But if that request that we'll hear immediately after this request is approved, then no screening would be required for that property line. The property would need to adhere to the Cedric County Sign Code for the LI district, and there is no landscape code for unincorporated Cedric County. As far as parking goes, they would be required to adhere to the parking standards set forth by the UCC, which will be determined by the uses at the time of development. Going through the zoning map and the surrounding context, again, a little bit more detail, property to the north is currently zoned SF20 and RR, is developed with agricultural uses, and of course, is being proposed to change to LI. Property to the west is LI in the city of Wichita and is developed with the Jabara Airport. Other property to the west is zoned LI and is located in unincorporated Cedric County, is developed with Public Works facility. Property to the northeast is zoned RR, is developed with a single-family dwelling. Property to the south is currently zoned SF20 and RR, is in agricultural use. And the zone change is being considered for the site. Properties to the east across North Greenwich Road are zoned MF18, LC limited commercial, and SF5 are in the city of Wichita. The property zoned MF18 and LC is developed with an elementary school, and properties zoned SF5 are undeveloped lots platted for single-family dwellings. They look like they are in the process of developing those. Other LI zone property is located within one-third of a mile to the northeast, and it should be noted, I don't know if we have that slide in here, but the airport authority did purchase a portion of the site, and as far as I understand, they are in agreement with this zone change request. I had asked for a slide to be included, but if not, it's essentially a small rectangle in this area right here on the site that is zoned SF20. The subject site is currently unplatted, and plating would be required for any commercial industrial development. Site has access to North Greenwich Road and is within Rural Water District Number 1. If the site were to be annexed into the city of Wichita in the future, owners would need to work with the Public Works Department to get sanitary sewer and water to the site. The request is in partial conformance with the comprehensive plan. The plan calls for residential employment mix, new employment and agricultural or vacant. Residential unemployment mix is defined as areas of land that likely will be developed with uses predominantly of a mixed nature. Due to the proximity of residential uses, employment uses likely will have limited negative impacts associated with noise, hazardous emissions, visual blight, and odor. New employment is defined as areas that will likely be developed with uses that constitute centers or concentrations of employment, primarily in manufacturing, warehousing, distribution, construction, research, technology, business services, or corporate offices, major shipping, shopping centers, and office parks likely will be developed within this area as well. And then agricultural and vacant is defined as areas that are undeveloped or used for agricultural productions. So staff's analysis is that establishing LI zoning on these properties when they're so close to other LI zone parcels is appropriate. And while there is SF5 directly to the east across North Greenwich Road, the screening requirements should mitigate any potential detrimental impacts. As far as locational guidelines, under the heading Development Pattern, Guideline 3A recommends that strip commercial development along arterials be discouraged, except along established commercial corridors and highways. And we do recognize that this is a large area, but the properties to the south are commercial and limited industrial in nature, and this section of North Greenwich has been trending as a commercial quarter. Under Land Use Compatibility Guideline 1C, recommends that residential development should not encroach upon existing or planned heavy industry, airfields, and military installations. And this requested zoning would encourage no residential uses to be developed so closely to the airport. And then lastly, under Development Pattern, Guideline 1D, industrial uses should be located in areas with good access to highways, rail lines, and airports, and obviously with Jabara Airport directly to the west, that would meet those requests. If we can go to the site pictures. Once again, a lot of these site pictures are gonna look very similar, but this is looking southwest into the property from the southwest corner. Next picture. Looking north away from the property up Greenwich Road. Next picture. This is looking east away from the property across North Greenwich. Next picture. This is looking kind of southeast and south down Greenwich Road. Next picture. I believe that's it. So with that, staff does recommend approval of the request based off the golden factors. We did have a couple of questions from neighbors about drainage, and once their answers, or their questions were answered in regards to those drainage problems being taken care of at plating and at development, they were, they seemed to be okay with those, those answers. So with that, I can stand for any questions.
All right, thank you Brad. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Joe Johnson?
Did we not have a case about the 43rd Street? Did we close that?
I'm sorry?
Did we close 43rd Street to traffic?
I believe...
Brad, I can take that.
Sure.
You're talking about, so 37th Street goes up and then occurs around the north end of the airport, yes. Essentially where 37th Street dead ends there on the pink line north of this, that's the end of the road, correct? Yes. Jabara did close the remainder of that right of way all the way to Webb.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, thank you Brad. We'll ask the applicant agent to come forward. You'll have 10 minutes. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Jay Cook, Boffin Company, 315 South Ellis. Agent on behalf of the applicant. I don't have much to add to what Brad was saying when looking at the development possibilities. Obviously, most of the zoning code allows for residential development, LI doesn't. It's not part of the city's plan to allow or to encourage residential development or any types of residences around an airport. We think, we thought that based off of the zoning around the area, that LI would be the best zoning to go to. So if you have any questions, I'll happy to answer.
Any questions for the applicant or agent? Seeing none, thank you. Standby. Now we'll open up to the public for questions, comments. Please make your way to the podium, and you'll give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes. And since there's both of you, if you're together, you can have up to six combined, so. I can do math.
Okay, I'm Corellia, and this is Gary Johnson, and we live at 3605 North Greenwich Road, which is a residence part, and...
Can you show us there, we're using the cursor?
Oh.
The mouse? Show us where your residence is on that map?
We're on the... Somewhere, Greenwich Road.
Drag the arrow.
We're south of 37th Street. Yeah, we're south 37th and north of that, where you're talking about.
Where you're at, yeah?
They need to have it showed on the map.
So you're on the east side of Greenwich or west side?
We're on the west side.
Okay, so you're that one house right there?
Yes. You're on the house there. And...
Thank you, that helps.
Okay, my concern, our concern is, number one is that we live, it's been residential and it's on Greenwich Road, and it's always been a two-lane highway. And you can't even cross the street with, with the way the traffic is right now. They drive 70 or 80 miles an hour all the way down Greenwich Road. And there's no lights, there's no stoplights or anything there. And there's, we have to go across the street to get our mail, which is in the, I think it's been rezoned to city limits, but we're still on the county limit on the side. And also that we have had several accidents, there's been several accidents out there and because of the heavy traffic. And people do not, I don't semiize everything. When they pass, they, the street is so narrow that it's a two-lane street. Well, cars and semis will come like, instead of pass, there's no passing zone, they will pass on both sides. You know, I don't know how to explain it, but they don't respect the fact that it's residential. And then the other thing that I have is that about six months ago, we had a fire there. There was a fire on 29th and...
Grass fire.
A grass fire, a large grass fire on, which was on 29th and Greenwich Road. And our home was, the fire was so bad, they had to have an helicopter, airplane, to drop water on our home. And they had at least 20 different fire trucks there. They had, it started at 29th Street. We had less than five minutes to get out. And the fire even skipped over across the road, it burnt up everything, and they had like 60 firemen there. And my concern is with all the, with rezoning it, in one of those pictures, it showed... In one of those pictures, it showed that there was a iron. I don't know the picture that he showed there, when, on the pictures that he showed. My house is right there where that iron is. And my, we live right, we live right straight behind, in front of Jabara Airport is in our backyard. Where they're talk, talking about rezoning is right next to us. And, you know, I have very, there's nowhere for residential people to live if they rezone everything around us. We're the only people, we're the only house there. We've been there for 40 years. And the people that were there, our neighbors, either they died and their children have sold the land, but there is no, you know, it's.
We have a couple of questions. The main two was, they already answered. This is sewer line and they say work with the board, so we can handle that. What she really wondering is, are they going to take us from county to city? That's her concern. But other than that, I don't know.
No, it's just, I mean, I understand that there's, that we are development. I understand progress, but still, I would like to be considered, you know, because we, it is our hope. And the wild animals, they're, they're getting, there's nowhere for them to go. They're in our backyard. And if they keep on building, there's, we're going to have, I mean, there's deer getting killed on both sides of the street. People don't respect the fact that it's residential. And I know with semis and the, what is it called? The, the new zoning that they're asking for. I know that they're not going to, the semi drivers, even now, when I'm standing outside to go across to get my mail, them guys will be driving between 60 to 80 miles an hour on both sides. They don't care. That don't, thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate your comments. As, as someone who grew up out in the country and saw commercialization and traffic increase around my neighborhood, I know exactly what you're feeling. So thank you for your comments. Any questions for the speakers? Mr. Williams Bay.
I'm not quite understanding exactly where their property is. Is it within the, the areas outlined there? Is it north of that?
No, it's south of this one. In the next zoning case.
I looked it up. I believe that it is this rectangle here.
It's, in the next zoning case, it's surrounded on the other side. So we have two zoning cases in this neighborhood. The next one, they're surrounded on the north.
The next zoning case encompasses land.
So it's that.
This is the next zoning case. So this is their land. This is the land that is currently being considered with this case.
Thank you. I don't know if staff wants to answer the questions or let the applicant. Mr. Waddle.
I do want to just address the question about annexation.
Yes.
And we, we can talk to you more in the planning department after this one, but the brief answer is that annexation can occur by, into the city of Wichita when you should, when your property shares a boundary. But typically I would, I would say that in the last few years, the city typically does annexations only upon request, not so much against the property owner's will, although that is an option per state law. But in recent past, it's not been something that the city of Wichita has done. But again, more than happy to talk with you afterwards and show you the state statutes.
And then also as related to that, if that does get annexed, then the property owner has to work with the city Public Works and Utilities to provide city water and sanitary services to the site.
That can depend. A, a city can annex and, and not provide additional services. It depends on the type of annexation and any agreements that would be between the city and the property owner.
Yep. Because that was his follow, his second question, so.
Yeah, that would be something to consult with Public Works and we can help you get in touch with them.
Mr. Cook, did you want to add any comments as part of, before, any other public comments or saying none? Mr. Cook, your rebuttal? You have two minutes.
Just gonna say that I definitely appreciate how passionate homeowners are about these things and I respect their opinions. As this is zoned SF-20 and rural residential, right now you could only build one house on it to develop it into what's similar on the east side of the road. You'd have to get a zoning to SF-5 or something like that. And I think that would be probably based off of the community investment plan, not a good use for that because of its proximity to Jabara. So we don't necessarily want houses not to be there, but based off the airport and, and all that, seems like this is the best use. That's all I got.
Any questions for the applicant? Saying none. Thank you, sir. Bring it back to the board for consideration and action. Commissioner Warren.
Just got a question. Who would we talk to? I know it's not our department, but in terms of traffic, what, what can we do to maybe kick the ball down the road a little bit and help, help out with that?
What we can do is take the minutes from this meeting and in this case, Brad, since this was your case, we can have Brad send a copy of the minutes to the, to Public Works for the county and just let them know that there were comments and that they can read about them in the minutes about this particular road. The other option would be to get the individuals in contact with Public Works so that they can have a direct conversation with them.
Sorry, ma'am. The public comment is, because we can follow up with staff afterwards. Commissioner, hi.
I have a, kind of a similar question about moving the mailbox to the other side of the street.
That's a new one for me, so we'll have to look into that one. That might be with the, be with the post office, so I'm not sure.
Commissioner Williams Bay.
Question, if, if, if this is annexed into the city, would they be required to hook onto the city services?
I don't know about required. I know that municipal services in the area are a challenge. If you guys recall, not too far north of here on the east side of Greenwich, we recently had a case where through the plating process, it was discussed about, you know, if development weren't occurred, they would have to install a significant amount of infrastructure to boost water pressure. Whether or not they're required to, obviously depending on the type of use and the needs regarding water pressure or water amounts or onsite sewer, it probably would just depend on the type of use. You can have commercial type uses not hooked up to municipal services. It just depends on what their needs are and if there's the ability to accommodate onsite, to accommodate their needs. So I don't necessarily know it'd be required to. They would probably have to sign protest agreements with the city, should the city then extend them and assess the fees to the properties for, to pay for the extension. But that's probably all going to be questions answered during the plating process.
Any other questions from the commission or comments? What's the will of the board? Anybody care to make a motion?
Move to approve per staff comment.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Warren, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dool with the second. So call for a vote. Should we, are we going to need a show of hands? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. We have two nays. And what was 11? We still have 13?
Nays were Miles and Williams Bay.
Williams Bay, correct.
Yep.
And we have 14 members, so.
Oh, we are full board right now.
Yeah, so 12 to 2.
12 to. For the record, Commissioner Bill Johnson just asked if I could add or not, so, yeah. All right. Next case. I think we're staying with Brad and we're staying in the neighborhood.
That's correct. I promise this is not the same report.
Right. And to that end, are you folks going to want to comment again on this or are you good? You've answered, we've answered all your questions? We'll chat with you, okay. So legal, do we need to have a full hearing since there are no more questions being asked or can we move on consent with this? Can we have a motion to approve if, you know, like I, we had earlier? Since there's no public comment now on this case, since they are, questions have been answered.
Yes.
Did the applicant agree? Can we just do the same thing that we did with the other one?
Yes.
Okay. Let me ask the question of the commissioner, are there going to be any questions on this case? Do you want to hear this case? Saying none. Is the applicant in agreement with the conditions as per staff report?
Thank you, Chair. I feel like you don't want to hear me talk anymore. And that hurts. No, we're definitely.
No, I'm just worried about how they do math again.
That's, that's tough. No, we, we're definitely in, in agreement with all of staff's comments.
Okay. Great.
Move for approval subject to staff comments.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner McKay.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Aldrich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
So we have 13 yays and one nay with that being Commissioner Miles. Thank you. All right. Next case is non-public hearing. It's referred back from the BOCC. We heard this case a couple of weeks ago. There has been some additional conversations since then, I guess. So there will be no public comment since it's just a hearing and you'll update us on what's changed since then, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. All right. So I'm just going to go over this very briefly to provide some updates as Chair Fry mentioned. So this was first heard at the May 22nd Metropolitan Area Planning Commission meeting. And then the applicant modified their request for general commercial with a protective overlay. And these modifications were intended to make the request more similar to the existing IPA district. And then on July 10th, staff met with staff from the McConnell Air Force Base and provided their updated recommendations for what land uses should be permitted onsite. And then the applicant provided an updated text for the requested protective overlay. And on July 17th, McConnell, representative from McConnell, sorry, provided updates to their recommendations. And then you'll see at your desk, there's a table, this was also presented to the Board of County Commissioners when I went there. Their recommendation was to send it back to the MAPC, mostly because there was a lot of, lot of moving parts and we wanted to get it more streamlined, more solidified, make it more clear for you guys to understand there. So at your desk, you will, or at your chairs, you will see the attached, the packet that we provided, one of which is the MAPC recommended uses onsite, or sorry, what is already allowed within the industrial park airport district, what was recommended by the planning commission, what McConnell feels is an appropriate use of the land and then what the applicant feels is appropriate as well. So just some update here. And this table is also provided in the slide here. The Air Force Base, they use this site, it's, it's the base's explosive ordinance detonation range or the EOD. McConnell staff has indicated that this range includes a proficiency range and a and a conics range. And then when possible, the public is provided a window of time when certain EOD activities would be taking place. Some of the EOD blast, or some of the blasts at the EOD range range up to 140 decibels. The information indicates that at this noise level, people would have the potential of being startled and the highest likelihood of having a noise concern. Just an overview, this was first heard by the planning commission on May 22nd and the recommendation for approval was a six to five, six to five vote. Staff is still recommending denial just because we typically don't change our recommendations even when new information has been provided. And then on July 9th, the Board of County Commissioners considered this application to send it back to the MAPC. They emphasized a desire for the MAPC to hear and consider additional comments from both the applicant and representatives from McConnell Air Force Base. And then representative from McConnell spoke at this meeting and I believe she is here today. So we have several alternatives for you to consider today. If you need help creating some new language for a different recommendation, please let us know. The first one is that the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission could approve the zone change request, adopt alternative findings and with a modified protective overlay, which would only allow those uses recommended by McConnell Air Force Base staff. This wouldn't add many additional uses to what is already allowed in IPA. You'll see it's mostly like animal care, vehicle repair, warehouse, self-storage, et cetera. The second alternative that we, that staff has provided is that the MAPC could adopt alternative findings and approve the request with protective overlay number 454 as revised by the applicant prior to the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission meeting. And then the third alternative is MAPC could adopt alternative findings and approve the protective overlay number 454 as it was approved already on May 22nd of this year. And we've always, we've also attached the minutes associated with the planning commission meeting as well as those from the Board of County Commissioners and then a noise guidebook figure from HUD about common sounds in decibels for your reference. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Okay. Commissioner Aldrich, thank you, Christina.
Yep. Christina, again, thank you. I do have a question, actually was sort of brought up yesterday, especially with the artillery and, and the noise and everything else. I don't know if anybody's got any pets or not, but I do and they are very skittish when it comes to thunder, lightning, Fourth of July. And this will bring a new meeting to Fourth of July over there if it's allowed to have animal care, kennels boarding, anything to do with animals over there. So as staff, does that cross your mind on that? You know, whether or not that should be allowed or taken out? I mean, that's.
Sure. Staff has actually not provided an additional analysis whether that specific use is considered appropriate for this land or for this subject site.
As you recall, the original staff recommendation, which is still on the table, is we recommended denial of the application, which would not allow those uses.
That would take care of that? Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Yes. Commissioner, hi.
Christine, can we, on your options, can we approve one of those options with removing the kennel boarding, breeding and training?
If you need assistance in providing the language for the motion, we're happy to help you with that.
Yes, sir. I think you can modify. These aren't the only alternatives, they're based on the information provided, but if the board feels that the proposed protective overlay would need to have modified uses based on today's meeting, yes, I believe that could happen.
Well, the, at the very least, we would have to add, because only one of the, of the two protective overlay recommendations, one of them has the setbacks when it's adjacent to the Air Force. The other one does not. So we'd have to add that language as part of the motion if we wanted to include that setback minimum, correct? Because it's not listed as part of the motion.
That's correct. Yes.
Because that's a request by McConnell, but it's not part of the protective overlay language except for their recommended one. So. Did I see another hand raised over here? Yes. Commissioner Warren.
I guess I'm, I'm wondering, was there a number proposal that had both agreement from McConnell Air Force Base and the applicant?
I think that's number one.
Sorry. The question was whether or not there was language that had both.
That both the applicant and the base were satisfied with.
Well, sorry, I came in a little bit late, but the language that the base was proposing was exactly the same as what the applicant was proposing, revised their change to be, except for the setbacks. So no, there's not, but if the applicant's in agreement with what McConnell is recommending, then I think you, you could just go off of what McConnell's recommended.
We, we know that there's been opportunity for both the applicant and McConnell to have discussions since our last meeting and since the BOCC review, is that correct? Have they been in conversation?
Yes.
Okay. So they can both answer this question. All right. So we'll ask the applicant to come forward. Thank you, Christina. Thank you, Christina. So, name and address for the record.
Kirk Miller, K E Miller Engineering, one seventeen Suluus. I'm the agent for the applicant. The chart on the far right is McConnell's recommendations that we have gone over a few times and tweaked here and there and we're both in agreement with it. We're fine with twenty-five foot setback because we've got forty-foot easements back there, so.
Okay.
It's not an issue as far as where the property borders, the McConnell Air Force Base. And we, we would request an approval based on the McConnell staff recommendations.
Okay, so, the alternative action of, number one, being to approve the zone change request with the modified protective overlay four fifty-four, which will allow only those uses recommended by McConnell Air Force Base staff as per the attached land. You're comfortable and okay with that?
Yes, we're fine with that.
And you're okay with the twenty-five foot setback on abutting property?
Right. And if you look at the, the list, there are a number of places where we've even limited some other things like construction sales and service, size of building, some of the others, we've said it needs to be within a certain distance from Rock Road, so it's not too close to the base. Because we've, we've talked about the, the sound from the base and, and what would be appropriate in those areas. And we even have one where we're restricting sales of food because they don't want large gatherings of people. So we've worked with them multiple times.
Great, thanks, that's good to hear, thank you, appreciate that. Any, Commissioner Miles?
So, so that still doesn't limit though, if we go by what McConnell staff recommends, the animal care limited, animal care general, or the kennel, which are all huge concerns of mine if we, if we allow those things.
But both, both McConnell and the applicant are okay with that?
Yes.
So if you want to make a motion to remove that, that would be up to you.
We actually talked about the sound a number of times also and, and what these sound levels actually mean when you look at the sound chart. And I, I understand the concerns, I have a dog that also doesn't appreciate the Fourth of July, so.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Miller? Saying none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Suppose for the record, we should just allow the public comment from McConnell, since they were part of the review and asked to be part of this process. Do you have anything that you'd like to add? You need to at least say that for the record, so. I could see the head nod, but. Just a name and address for the record, please.
Kennedy Dunn and McConnell Air Force Base is my address. Good afternoon, commissioners, chair, planning staff, remaining public. Just a quick comment, we have discussed this in length and Mr. Miller has been wonderful to work with, very, very helpful, very attentive, very great to just respond easily as well as the planning staff, so thank you for that, both of you, everyone involved, it has been great. In regards to our recommended, yes, we stand by it and we are okay with everything as is written.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Saying none, thank you, and again, thank you for your service. All right, that closes that portion and we'll bring it back to the board for action consideration. Mr. Aldrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My, my thoughts and concerns haven't, haven't changed on this. I know that McConnell is wanting to be good neighbors, they don't, they don't want to cause any problems, they just want to do their job protecting our, our nation and us. My concern is still the encroachment. There's a reason why that buffer was put into place. That reason hasn't changed. And I am deathly afraid that if we start allowing the encroachment or zone changes and allow, you know, commercial or anything to, to go in there to breach that, I think we're asking for, for major problems. And again, going down in the past, where, where we had base closures throughout, you know, the, the nation, and a lot of that was due because their local governments allowed encroachments and they couldn't expand and they, and, you know, of course, a lot of other reasons, that wasn't the only reason. But I'm just afraid that we're, we could be jeopardizing, you know, just on the dollar end of it, you know, millions of dollars worth of economic impact to, not just the city, but the region. I think we're playing, again, we're, we're playing with fire here. I think it's very, very dangerous precedent to start allowing any encroachment around that military base, especially in today's times, that we're, we're seeing not just here, but also worldwide. I just, I sure hope that this, the commission chooses to staff recommendations of denial, but that's just, I'm just one, one voice.
Let's see, Commissioner Dool?
I agree with your, excuse me, I agree with, that's what I like. I agree with.
Just because you said agree, because you said agree three times only means still one vote.
Third time's the charm. I generally agree with your comments, Commissioner. Certainly have some strong contacts with the base. I think though, however, if the base is agreeable with those items in yellow on here, I can support this.
Thank you. Commissioner Warren?
I understand the concerns, living next to McConnell my whole life, the base has been an important part to our community. But the process that we go through here is such that if, to deny anything, in effect, I mean, we've come to an agreement between McConnell and the, and the applicant, and deny anything would be a taking of some, of a private property. So we're not allowing you to anything, we're gonna have to leave it as, as farmland. And I just don't think that that's something, unless we're willing as a city to, and a county to buy the property, then we have to allow what's reasonable. And I think this is the, the process that we've gone through has gotten us to the point of being reasonable. And so with that, I would move that we would approve the, the application using the wordage as that has been agreed to by both the applicant and the McConnell Air Force Base.
Just to be clear, Commissioner Warren, the, and you're comfortable adding to that the setbacks being the minimum of twenty-five feet? Okay. Is that good enough for Legal and Staff?
Yes, sir.
All right. We have a motion and we had a second by Commissioner Dool. Could you have a call to the question? Commissioner Aldrich?
I just, I just want to say that based, with all due respect, but based on what you just got done saying, we might as well go ahead and look at removing the buffer altogether then, based on that.
Noted. Call the question, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
So, I need a show of hands on the nays, please.
If we could, sir, can we just do a roll call?
Do a roll call, that's fine.
So the motion is to approve plus the twenty-five foot buffer. Fry?
Aye.
Mater?
Aye.
McKay?
Aye.
Dool?
Aye.
Bill Johnson?
Aye.
Hi.
Aye.
Nix?
Aye.
Clontz?
Nay.
Warren?
Aye.
Joe Johnson? Miles?
Yay.
Zimmelman?
Aye.
Aldrich?
No.
Williams Bay? Sorry, I show eleven votes for, three votes against.
Thank you. That closes all of our hearing items. I do have one thing I need to bring to the attention of the commission. Remember, we had the College Hill Neighborhood Plan that was recently approved as part of that process. We had a member serve on that steering committee. There is also now in the works a Midtown Neighborhood Plan Committee. Am I missing anything there, Mr. Waddell? So we will need someone to sit on that committee.
Yes, we will, yes, sir.
Okay. So, okay, so we have two that have asked, that decision rests with the commission? Or is it a vote? Or the commissioner? Okay, I'm gonna, Cindy, I appreciate your volunteerism, but with Mr. Mater living in the district, I think it'd be appropriate for him to serve on that. So, I will appoint Leon Mater to the Midtown Neighborhood Plan Committee.
And you'll explain this to my family, right?
Only when you take the checks that you, you know, for the service on it, yeah. With that, we are adjourned.